I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get started, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that said, you have the minutes from last month's meeting. We deliver to you in the packet any corrections or additions to the minutes. We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We've got two site plans on the agenda. Roger, site plan for, how do you pronounce it?
Coidee.
Coidee?
I just asked John.
Okay. Coidee of Tennessee for Stock Creek.
The site plan's for a new industrial facility. It's gonna be at 339 Donovan Drive in Stock Creek Industrial Park. The property's identified on tax map. Nine parcel 27 is zoned industrial. I'm bringing this before the planning commission to be voted. I just used the old write-up. So, it's on the agenda now. The plan shows a proposed 77,820 square foot structure that will have a front entrance on Donovan Drive and rear access to Stock Creek Boulevard. The structure will meet the building's setback requirements. It is 63 feet from the property line, its closest point. The parking will include 82 parking spaces in the front with the shipping and receiving area in the back. The 82 spaces break down to one space per every 949 square feet of floor area, which is an acceptable range in accordance to our parking requirements. The project will disturb 3.73 acres and will not require a grading permit from the county because it is located outside the urbanized area, but will have to meet the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation requirements. They'll have to get a SWIP, and they may already have that on. They have a submitted drainage plan and erosion control plan in accordance with the site plan. The drainage calculations were not originally included, but were, and basically that's just gonna drain off into the Stock Creek embankment. And it's shown on the site plan there, how it's gonna tie in there with existing structures. The elevations of the buildings weren't included when I first typed this up, but I have included those in your packet that you have now. It went through their industrial board for design requirements for that industrial park, and it does look to meet our requirements, but they've already, you can correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think the industrial board's already accepted this as well.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner McCollum?
Roger, this much grading, no detention basin required on it at all for any, the drainage?
No, they, I had Justin look at it just to make sure. Do you want this big set, or? There's some detention, or not detention or retention, but there's different drainage structures on it.
It looks like they're dumping it out on the private property, isn't it? But you say we aren't the ones that review that anyway, is their own design group?
It starts on C 1.5. And it all, once it's all done, it all, the embankment for Stock Creek. Of course, there's the erosion control, they've got erosion structures to control sedimentation during construction.
I guess, Roger, the, I had the same thought that Commissioner McCollum, as I went through the plans, I didn't study them in detail, but nothing jumped out at me that there was anything to slow down the runoff, or, I know they'll have to have erosion control in place during construction and when the earth is bare, but I don't know what the design standards are within the industrial park, if the industrial park already has sedimentation ponds or anything else.
I have no idea about what the industrial park has, but we just require them to submit a drainage plan with calculations from engineering, the Honeycutt Group is the ones that actually did all the engineering on it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not a hydrologic engineer, so I...
Can you help us at all? Commissioner McCollum questioned, and I guess I'm questioning as well. Is there already sedimentation out there, or is it not required at all?
I'm unaware of any type of regional detention or sediment ponds on the property. Had this been in the urbanized area, there would've been numerous different requirements that would have been met through my stormwater regulations, but it falls just outside the urbanized area, so none of my regulations apply. However, typically, it's not uncommon to see where a development like this would drain directly into an embankment or the river or the lake, that detention is not needed because there's really nothing downstream to flood if it's going directly to the lake. If there's a subdivision downstream or something like that, or roadway, that's where the need for detention would be required. But in this situation, it's basically, from what I've looked at, a lot of this is drained to natural, already existing natural drainways and then directly into the embankment there in Stock Creek, so there's really no chance of flooding now property downstream. Now, the speed of the water, I believe, in the site, could be an issue, however, there is outlet protection at some of these headwales to slow that water down, and obviously there needs to be good vegetation there as well.
Does TDAC look at that issue at all? I guess, I understand we're not looking at a flooding issue, but I, even though we're dumping into a lake, I guess I just get concerned about clean water.
Yeah, well, they obviously look at the erosion control plan, and during construction, the post-construction, they really don't have any regulations. That's where the county's regulations come into play. And if there's more, if there was more disturbance than there would need to be sediment traps or sediment ponds during construction, but there's not enough disturbance that requires that on this site.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question, Roger. Just a sec. Do we, or does the county require sprinkler systems in the industrial park buildings? Like, does this one have a sprinkler system out here?
That's a code question, but I would, I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say yes because sprinklers are becoming more and more required. There's even talk about them being required in residential for too long, so I'd be surprised if they didn't require them.
Any other questions or comments? A motion is in order. I've got a motion to approve the site plan. Do I have a second? Second. There's no further discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Roger. Four Circle off of Middle Settlements Road.
This site plan's for an expansion of an existing non-conforming use at 116 O'Clock Circle. The property's identified on tax map 46 parcel 59. The zoning classification is S for suburbanizing. The proposed, or the property houses the existing manufacturing business as well as a manufactured home park and is located on Middle Settlements Road just outside the city limits of Maryville. The proposed expansion is for a 60 feet by 165 feet addition connecting to the existing building by two breezeways. This is the third expansion of this business in the last few years. The structure will be located on site of an existing house that will be removed. The site plan also shows five additional parking spaces up front. The site plan shows that all building setbacks will be met by this addition. Drainage calculations are not required for this site plan based on the minimum increase of impervious surface, which is 1.3 percent. Septic area is not a concern due to the property being serviced by City Sewer, and this addition will not affect the parking at this location. They'll still have plenty of parking off of the public right-of-ways for the business.
Any questions or comments? If I understand this drawing right, Roger, the new building just basically sits over top that existing residential, and there's an existing garage that says it's gonna be demolished there, so...
That is correct. It's just the shaded areas, the proposed structure.
Oh, the shading didn't show up in mine, unless I look at it real hard. It's there. I hadn't noticed it. Commissioner French?
I guess it says this is the third expansion. I'm assuming this existing residence was part of the business.
I believe it was a family home at one point. I'm not sure what the use was, is now currently, I guess.
And then, it shows an existing commercial building, and I don't see the structure. It just says an existing commercial building. Is there a structure there?
It's right next, it's the big...
Yeah. I don't see the...
Where it says existing building, if you look at the outline, it goes over to the, where the five-foot building setback, if you come in from there, you can see the building. See up there's where it says existing concrete on your drawing? The building starts right there. The corner of it is where it says breezeway connector.
I see that.
The building sits right in there adjacent and immediately beside the existing, what they're calling the existing residence. Commissioner McCollum?
Roger, is there existing parking right over there where the existing gravel is? Is that where the existing?
Yes, yes.
Just curious, why are they just paving five spaces?
Well, did you pave the rest of the parking also, or is it still just gravel?
No, it was paved.
That's when you did the last addition? Yeah, yeah. That's paved also.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
We have no hearings tonight, no miscellaneous items, long-range planning. Before we jump into the discussion of the new commercial zone for two-lane arterial roads, Mr. Seymour has requested to speak to the commission about some new arterial commercial zone, and I'd like to also open the mic up following Mr. Seymour. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak before we go into our discussion tonight, I'd ask you to keep your comments succinct. And I know you didn't have warning that you were gonna have that opportunity tonight, but if you'd like to speak, I'm gonna open the floor up. Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I will get right to the point. I would like for the commission to consider expanding the scope of this proposed ordinance to include connector streets. And I'll tell you exactly why. We represent Dollar General stores and a couple of their developers. They are looking for a place on Morganton Road, which I thought was an arterial road. Mr. Lamb straightened me out. It is a connector road under your major road classification plan, and I'll tell you it's right there, is it Lafayette Road, John?
I think that's where the storage units are.
Yeah, it's where, it would be right adjacent to the storage units out there. Dollar General store, and I'll get to my point immediately. Typical standard rural store is 9,100 square feet. They need about one acre of property, typically a little more. They have 30 parking spaces, and believe it or not, their traffic counts are not that high. For this type of store, they generate somewhere between 15 and 20 trips per hour. Now, that's average. Peak periods in the afternoon especially, the traffic generation will be slightly, or will be higher than it is, say, at nine or 10:00 in the morning. They typically operate these rural stores 12 hours a day, nine to nine at best. They are a general store in the sense that they offer food, dry goods, and I'm sure everybody here has been in a Dollar General store at one time or another. But they are a store that in rural areas is the closest access for a lot of people to a market where they can get day-to-day provisions without having to go to a Walmart or Target or a major grocery store like Kroger. So, that would be my request, that you all consider inclusion of connector roads as well as arterial roads in the planned rural commercial zone tonight. I looked at the other provisions that Mr. Lamb had drafted up. They seem appropriate, and I think it would be best, since you are getting into the rural areas of the county, that any use, including my clients, would be as a special exception or a use-on-review rather than as of right, so that this body and the Board of Zoning Appeals would have the opportunity to review any such proposed use. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to ask a question. Typically, does a Dollar General bear the cost of any infrastructure within right-of-way at their expense?
You're talking about...
Turn lanes or not the other way?
Yes, they would do all that. Ex-sell, decell lanes.
At their expense?
Any other questions, Mr. Seymour?
I have a question for clarification. On our road classification, what actually are the factors that determine it besides traffic count?
Well, it's not necessarily traffic count, it's the function of the road itself. An arterial road, let's say 411, is a major connector between the counties, 411 North, 411 South. You get off of those main corridors, you have collector status roads, which their main function is to provide service to land and to collect from local roads. That's why they're called collector roads. So, they funnel traffic into the arterials. The arterials cover, usually carry a bigger level of traffic or a more robust type of infrastructure.
So, the traffic count on Morganton Road, would that be somewhat comparable to a true RAC road?
Not to an arterial, no.
Would not?
No.
So, that would be what would prevent that classification?
Well, it's not, like I say, it's not the traffic, it is the function of the road itself. There's a lot of development out there. You know, this site is just down from Panorama Estates, and Panorama Estates has a lot of houses there, and there's been quite a few subdivisions along Morganton Road. It is mainly used as a collector to those residential uses. And maybe we can kind of go back a little bit. We did in our previous ordinance have a provision for special exception for commercial uses. It was limited to 4,000 square feet in recognition that this is a limited density type of a situation, 4,000 square feet on collector status roads. You've heard Mr. Seymour say that their, that Dollar General, their standard is around, I'd say 10,000. It's 9,000 to 10,000. They have some various footprints that they use, and we've had experience with them, but all the experience we've had with them have been on arterial types of roads.
Okay, well, let me ask you another scenario.
All right, Tom, I'm not gonna cut you off. I think we'll, let's incorporate that discussion into our, and let's get our public input. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Seymour? Bruce, you don't?
No, I am, Bruce.
Okay. We'll pick up this, we can pick up this discussion when we go into discussion. Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you to all of you as well. I'm tremendously concerned about the possibilities, both positive and untoward possibilities of this proposal. To make it possible to have commercial development at virtually every crossroads along 411 North is a scary proposition. It stands to change significantly the character of those areas and lead to a multitude of additional problems. One of them has been alluded to already, the question of traffic. Two-lane blacktop 411 is not designed, at this point, for commercial use. It can barely carry the traffic it carries now. I'm also concerned about the possibility of sprawl. If we create a more or less blanket provision allowing development at each one of those intersections, that would almost by definition result in sprawl. I would much rather see development proceed in an orderly fashion out from the center of already developed areas. Of course, commercial development is at odds, in character at least, with what is already there at most of those locations, because most of those locations are rural, farm, small residential areas, so there's untoward possibilities there. Mr. Seymour mentioned that a Dollar General often has the closest access to certain services and products. Personally, I feel that in the United States, there's a sort of a cult of convenience. If there's a convenience store 10 blocks from you, people want one five blocks away. If there's one five blocks away, they'd like to have one two and a half blocks away, and if there's one two and a half, they'd like to have one right next door. I don't think we always serve the best interest of the public by acceding to this cult of convenience. A Dollar General's a nice little store, got lots of cheap stuff in there. It appeals to a lot of people, but it doesn't mean that we have to have a lot of them. There are already a lot of Dollar General stores and similar stores in Blount County. So, finally, I would like to propose an idea that I've mentioned before, but I'd like to see an ad hoc committee set up to study this. The ramifications are extensive, and as I said, possibilities are that this could go in a wonderful direction and improve the character of the county. There's also the untoward possibility that it could go off in the wrong direction, that we could end up with a real mess on our hands. So, considering all of these things, I think we should have an ad hoc committee to study this, get a handle on everything, see what's best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I'm sorry, I don't know your names.
I'm Doug Cox. I live in a top-of-the-world community. I'd like to echo some of what John said, most of what John has said. It sounds like what we're trying to do is bring about a very good plan for commercial development of rural areas in Blount County. I think that's inevitable, but the question is, how are we doing it, and have we thought it through? There's a lot of questions raised on both sides of this equation already. I would like to see some kind of a discussion forum, maybe it's an ad hoc committee, where we simply talk about the different models. What appeals to me is community-based. We already have communities like Wildwood, Lanier, we have the Townes and Community. We have a lot of small communities where people live and they cluster their habitations. If we had the right kind of commercial developments in those areas, it brings people together as opposed to pushing them apart, which is what up and down the roads do, to me. It doesn't bring people together. So, a dollar store, I like dollar stores. I shop in them sometimes. Where it should go and how it should go, I think, is something that requires some thought from this body and other bodies, so I second what Mr. Templeton said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that background, John, did you want to, you get your light on there, you're just ready to talk. With that background, all right, I'm gonna open the floor up, and we need to discuss, John had written a document for our discussion tonight, and we can pick up, Tom and Bruce, where we left off on your questions about arterials versus collectors, et cetera. Bruce?
What would be the difference in a site on the Morton Road, different than what we did last month on Montvale Road? Did you just have to come and ask for rezoning in that one spot?
I'll let John speak to that, but it is because of the status of Montvale Road, and particularly as it sits relative to the suburbanizing, I believe. John?
Yes, we've got several things to consider here. One is the 1101 Growth Plan, which identifies rural areas and urban areas. The one on Montvale was inside the Maryville urban growth boundary. It was on, it was collector status road. Major collector status road. It wasn't minor, it was major, but it was in the urban growth boundary, and that was the kicker there. We do have plans that say we want to encourage the development in the urban growth boundary, a higher density development and lower density development outside the urban growth boundary in the rural areas. And we also have in our plans indications that we do want to have commercial uses allowed throughout the county in appropriate context, and that context we've had in the past has been a little bit of higher density, higher intensity use along the major types of roads, four-lane roads. We have a, already have an RAC zone. We're now talking about a level-down two-lane arterial roads, and we have an RAC II zone. We had discussed before collector status roads, and as I mentioned, there were provisions in the old regulations...
there were provisions in the old regulations for allowing special exception, commercial uses on collector status road, limited to 4,000 square foot footprint. Now, why the 4,000 square foot footprint? Because you have to make some adjustment or some definition of lower density development in the rural area. If you just allow what occurs in the urban growth boundary to occur out in the rural area, you're really not addressing the difference between the two. And floor area is one of the ways to address the difference between the two. Another is the status of the roads, and we are now incrementally doing that by looking at rural arterial commercial to, for two-lane arterial roads. Stretching this to collector status roads, I think we do need to have quite a bit more discussion because we're talking about two different animals, and I think we need to have some considered discussion on that. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. Like, like I say, we had it before. We took it out for some reason, and I think the intent in the past was, after we took it out, we would reconsider it in the future, and we're reconsidering it now. I just think that collector status roads are a different animal than arterial roads. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. What I've got before you has actually gone through quite a bit of discussion in the Planning Commission and a process that has identified certain types of uses and certain types of, types of context, and I've made it explicit in the proposal you have before you. So this is a culmination of a lot of discussion. I think the other discussion we might have on different types of, of context might need to occur, but I think we're at a point now that we've really gotten to a point of, of looking specifically at a proposal, and that's what, what you have before you, based on your recommendation or your request the last time.
Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal by Mr. Seymour kind of has taken me back a little bit, and with that new wrinkle, I, I'm just curious if it wouldn't help to maybe take a suggestion of creating a committee with a couple of the Planning Commissioners on it, with some citizen participation, to discuss this and, and bring it back to the Planning Commission and with, with some tweaks in it. I, it's a suggestion that, that, you know, the Planning Commission can take and, and do with what they, you know, what they think is best. But that's, the, the collector status, it's, it's kind of putting a new wrinkle in. And I, if we're going to create a zone, are we going to create a third zone to, to take care of collector status roads? And I, I think if we're gonna, if we're going to include collector status roads in it, we need to include it all in one, one document instead of trying to look at it separately. I think we, we need to do the thing in, in one, one document so we can understand exactly what we're going to do on diff, the different areas. That's a suggestion.
Thoughts, input? Oh, I'm sorry, Tom?
John, can you give me an example of an existing scenario now in a collector status road, that we have a 4,000 square foot or less footprint? And then my next question to go along with that, can you also give me an example if somebody, if they wanted to expand that, and what would be the avenues they would take, and has that happened? And are you aware if it was approved or disapproved?
There's two different questions that are, that are really quite different in, in what you said. I think that there have, I think there might have been some office buildings along collector status road, like Old Miles Ferry. I don't recall anything on Morganton Road, but Old Miles Ferry, there was an office, I think it's a dental office or something.
Morganton Road, the storage buildings down there close to where Mr. Seymour was?
Roger, hit your, hit your mic.
Well, I was going to get, that, that was actually grandfathered.
It was grandfathered, but they expanded.
Yeah.
But they've got those rights under state law.
I was going to get to that, so let's, let's, let's focus on what was approved new. We did have provisions for special exceptions. Some of them did come through. They were smaller. Even along 411 South, there were quite a few special exceptions that were approved for new structures and new businesses. So that could work under the present rural zone. You could put special exception back in there and put a, put a broader, broader base for that. And that could be extended like it was before to collector status roads. As far as existing businesses, like Roger says, there are quite a few that are in the area. They have rights under state statutes if they are a genuine non-conforming use, that is, that they were there before we adopted zoning or changed the zone to make them non-conforming, that they can expand within reason, within the site that they've got. So they could actually go to more than 4,000 square feet.
Well, I'm really referring to anything since we've had those, those in place.
Well, Roger mentioned one was the, just in that area, was the storage building.
Are you aware of any since then that have requested an expansion? And if they did, what would be the avenue they would take?
Well, we had one tonight. It was an expansion of a, wasn't that a non-conforming?
Uh, yes.
Along a collector status road, within the urban growth boundary.
But was, is that one not still grandfathered? That's the grandfathered though.
Well, that, that's what non-conforming means grandfathered. It was grandfathered. It was there before we had zoning. It's got certain rights under state statutes for expansion on the site, on its original site.
I'm, I'm referring to one that's post, post zoning.
Well, that's what creates, that, that's what creates the grandfathering, is the zoning. I'm not sure I understand your question. Before zoning, they were going anywhere.
There is one eight months ago that was new, 4,000 square foot built.
Oh, I don't know about 4,000 square foot.
For example, that's what I'm saying, not, not something from years ago, but something recently.
Well, how many, how many square feet is that?
Since 2000, it was, I think 2005, we took that provision out of the zoning regulations, so there's not been any requested since then in the R1 zone.
You're talking about a non-expansion of a non-conforming use or a new use?
A new use.
A new use. Well, we haven't, we haven't allowed that since we took it out.
Those provisions, those provisions came out in 2005, when the RAC, in kind of in conjunction with the RAC coming in, the zoning regs were kind of gutted, or there was major sections taken out.
So basically, everything's grandfathered at that point, correct?
From that point on, the only thing that existed, and that's kind of what has brought us to this point, we're kind of revisiting because we took a lot of, as John mentioned, we, we took the ability out because of the way we rewrote when the RAC went in. So, and the RAC was obviously limited to some
Have, have we, have we ever not voted in favor? Well, first of all, they're grandfathered, so they have the right to expand, correct? So we really are not making decisions. We're just endorsing it, just like we did tonight.
Well, you're, you're, you're looking at the site plan and making sure, and Roger's doing the same thing, and making sure that like meets the setbacks and that there is sufficient land there. You, you look at the septic capability, which you looked at tonight, since it was on sewer, it wasn't an issue. So you do look at certain things, and you can turn it down if it doesn't meet the criteria of having sufficient land to expand. But we haven't come to that yet. We haven't reached that limit. Usually, if somebody comes in and they find they can't do it, you don't see it because it stops its staff, and they say that, no, that's not something that's really, we can pass.
Do you see that very often, that scenario?
Well, yes, I've had to tell a lot of, a lot of people that had ideas, no, since, since we removed the special exception capabilities out of the, or special exception limitations out of the R1 zone altogether. And I can think of one example of, before we did that, on Morganton Road, a fellow, he had a pre-existing building, but it didn't have a use in it. It was just a, it was used for residential storage at some point, garage-type building, but he wanted to turn it into a pizza place. And it went through the BZA for a, a special exception on that one. And I can't remember if they turned that one down, or if it was, he got it approved and, and just didn't follow through with it. It's, it's been a long time ago. But yeah, in the R1 zone, there was, there's been a lot of no's for the past several years.
You answered that question. We don't see that. I think that's probably where, we don't take that consideration. You're cutting them off at the pass, so we'd never have to get into that.
They could always continue to bring it forward for review, but you know, they'd spend a lot of money getting it here. So that, to, for a definite no, if something doesn't fit.
Generally, a, a no from the staff is appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and you wouldn't see it anyway. And it would be the Board of Zoning Appeals to say whether it met the criteria of the zoning regulations and whether it could be accepted. So, no, this body probably wouldn't see it anyway.
You know, and I would, I would agree with this conversation that the last meeting's example was inside the urban growth boundary. Would probably bring a lot of merit, and that was a positive direction versus not doing anything. So I, I could go along with urban growth boundary argument pretty much on a, on a consistent basis, if, if that were the, if that were the scenarios. Where does the urban growth boundary down Morganton Road, where is it?
I think it's just south of William Blunt Drive, about Dotson, Dotson Memorial. It doesn't, it doesn't go far down Morganton.
Would we want to, I mean, or do you, or would you even take that in consideration inside the urban, urban growth boundary? Or was that, not thinking correctly, if you're going to consider something as we're discussing? You couldn't restrict it to that, could you?
Well, we already have provisions. I'm not sure I understand the, the question, 'cause we already have provisions to accommodate inside the urban growth boundary, much more than in the rural. That's because those two are different animals. Okay?
Mr. McCall?
So anything zoned suburbanizing is considered urban growth boundary, is that right?
Not necessarily. We developed zoning at the same time that we had developed the urban growth boundary and the 1101 Growth Plan, and there are some discrepancies, but they are minor, and they really haven't come into play on commercial uses. Let me put it that way. I mean, I want to give you a complete answer, that it's not completely congruent, but it never has come up in the context of commercial use.
Mr. French?
I'm trying to get this straight about my, you said the urban growth boundary going down Morganton Road is, cuts off at William Blunt Drive, is that correct?
It's about 500 or 600 feet beyond William Blunt Drive.
Okay.
Going, going towards Greenback.
Going towards Green, so anything beyond that?
Is rural.
Is rural?
Yes.
I guess my question is, is Lafayette Road past that?
Oh, way past.
Okay, I, I didn't, I wasn't sure where Lafayette Road was.
Several miles.
So, so you, okay.
It's actually past that.
It's past that.
There's a store, there's a market.
Yeah, there's a little, little gas station.
Subdivision entrance and a mini store.
Yeah. If you go past Panorama Estates entrance, it's just past that. There's another left-hand road, and there's a little market there, and then there's some storage units. That's, just beyond that is where we're talking about.
All right, with that discussion, let's, any feedback or any comments to John on the proposal that he had, had written?
I think, given what our charge to John last time, he's done an excellent job of coming back with that, because we wanted no special exceptions and so forth and so on. So I think he's, he's met the things that we were talking about. Whole other question about if you include other roads, but given the charge we gave him, he, he delivered the goods.
To Commissioner's, French's expression of having the problem complicated by the collector, any feedback to Commissioner French? If I remember.
I've got a, I've got a comment back to you. It, it took me a long time to get comfortable that the list of potential roads was this large. This new request is opening up to a totally different thing, and I'm really uncomfortable with that.
To make, that is a, a giant leap, although I, I understand the confusion between Morganton versus Montvale. Morganton is probably a, is from a highway, I don't know, if we had the Highway Department here, there would probably be more concerns about Morganton than, there is more accidents. And I, I don't know that for a fact. I don't have the statistics, but Morganton is a, it seems like I see accidents in the paper on that road probably more frequently than I do any other road.
And, and it's not just Morganton that we're opening this up to, is what concerns me. Like, like, like Jerry says, we're, you know, it's, we're, we're looking at a, a real impact in, in the rural community if we open it up to collector roads. That's, that's why I think possibly we might all, I think maybe a workshop or something, a, a committee to, to look at the whole picture instead of this particular one, one issue on arterial roads. I think we need, we might need to look at collector roads also at, at the same time. There may be some intersections on collector roads that, that would handle, you know, something like this. But I think we need to look at it really closely, i- if we do. And, and again, I, my, my whole reasoning for this is, are we going to create two separate zones instead of one zone?
Well, I guess that comes down to a, a basic question is, is there a difference between arterial and collector? And I think, I think there is, because we've got a lot of roads in the, the county that, it seems like a huge step. The, the arterials that, as we have it defined right now, is a, is an incremental process. So it's, I think we complicate it to open the door up to even talking about the collectors at this point. That's not to say that there doesn't need to be some conversation about it. Give me some feedback. Where do you want to go?
I think I suggested last time, it might be a good idea for, and to get together and drive these roads and look at what we're talking about. You know, I, I'm familiar with some of them, but I spend a lot of time in my district in the Seymour area, and I, and I, I've drives some of these roads occasionally, but I don't think I'm familiar enough to be able to make a decision. And, and, you know, I don't know if it, if we can get together as a group, if that, if it's gonna go against the sunshine law, but I, I don't know. We, we talked about it last time, maybe getting together, but you know, if we're not going to do that, then I'm, I want to take the time to drive it myself, I guess.
If you're talking about having a tour of, of more than one Planning Commission member, I think we would technically have to publish that and have the public be able to drive along with that.
Mr. Roddy?
I just want to, again, say, to go from four highways that are arterials to all collector roads is, to me, is just too big of a jump. It's just, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that.
David?
Commissioner French, one, I've driven 411 North twice. One, one as a passenger and one as a driver, so I don't know if my criteria changed, 'cause I tried to, I had to pay a 10 more attention to the road, but I counted between 28 and 33 places from the urban growth boundary to the county line that were, had commercial activity. If you count government, church, and commercial activity. That's, that's a surprising number. But if you count, if you count the auto repair, mini storage, kennels, RC car repair place, there's 28 of them, minimum. That's a surprise. That's a surprising number on an existing road and I did it twice. So, and then my other, I didn't bring my iPad. The other thing I looked at is in relation to Lafayette Road versus the Garner Circle. I'd be interested to know the dis- difference from, the distance from, say, the intersection of Montvale Road and 321 to the end of the urban growth boundary on Montvale Road as compared to, say, from Foothills Mall Drive to where the urban growth boundary ends at William Blunt Drive or where Lafayette Road. See how far out that distance is. It looks like it's kind of out of whack a little bit.
The urban growth boundary was made fairly thin and using William Blunt Drive as the geographical reference. It's made fairly thin along that, okay? And, and that was, that was the end of what Mariville said that they were interested in as far as urban growth boundary. So, everything af- after that is, is rural. You go out, you just think how far out Panorama Estates is. I mean, I, I'm estimating three or four miles and that's near what, where Lafayette is.
Guess what I was trying to say is the one that we just approved at Garner Circle, if you swung that around and used the same reference point, how far down Morganton Road would it land?
Well, it was in the urban growth boundaries. I, I, I think we're talking apples and oranges here. Well, I guess I'm not explaining myself well.
I think what David is saying, don't let me put words in your mouth, but he's just, the urban growth boundary on Morganton tended to remain close to the urban growth already. And for whatever reason, it was really the city of Mariville that determined the urban growth boundary going down Montvale. And I, I would assume that the city fathers had visions that Montvale was going to expand or had greater probability of expanding commercially. So, therefore, they tended to draw the urban growth boundary further down.
Well, I, I can tell you, one of the characteristics that they were looking at was where they had sewer and you had, all you got to do is go up, uh, not Montvale, what's the other intersection, Ralston Road and you get into quite dense development very quickly. So, it's not that far from dense development down to that intersection with, uh, Montvale Road. Now, Montvale Road is, there is, there's a, a kind of a bulb out there, but it's not, it's probably about 500, 600 feet also. A bulb out around that intersection that was the end of their, their consideration of urban growth boundary.
In our next packet, can we get a map of the urban growth boundaries?
Sure. Do we want John to make any other adjustments to this before we look at that urban growth boundary? Any thoughts or feedback?
If you really want to dig deep, go onto the planning website and I think it's under the, the plans section. Go down, way, way down to the bottom and there's actually a, a paper I did for a collegiate planning association that was about the urban growth boundary controversy way, way back. That's more than, about 15 years ago. And you'll, you'll see some of the issues that were raised on that. Looking at a map is one thing. Understanding the underlying thought process is another. So, if you really want to dig deep, go onto the website, go down and there's a, there's a critique of the 1101 Growth Plan in Blunt County and look at that process and you'll see why we came to some of the conclusions we did on that map. I'll tell you what, we can send the link to you. Okay? Keep in mind, it's, it's, it's old, but it will give you an idea, because that, that urban growth boundary map has not changed in 15 years or less, a little less than that maybe, but that'll give you the idea of, of why, why we came to that conclusion.
Any other comments, Commissioner French?
I guess my suggestion would be to move this to the next month's agenda until we can read the critique that John is speaking of and possibly take a look at the urban, urban growth map. We, I, I'm sure, I'm, I'm assuming it's on the, it's on the planning website also, isn't it?
Uh, we can, we can send you a link.
Okay.
We don't have that directive of access to the GIS system, but it is actually, I think, on the Mariville website for all the towns. And we've got a PDF file that we can send to you directly. You just have to view it and, you know, just scan around it.
So, I, I, I'm going to suggest we move it to the next month's agenda.
All right, Commissioner Roddy?
I just had a question for John. Is any road that goes into an arterial road a collector road?
Not all of them. Some of them are local roads because they're mainly for access to property. You'd have to look at the, in fact, I'll give you, I'll, I'll send to you the, uh, last major road plan. We did that just a few years ago. We updated it. Send that to you and that'll show you the urban growth boundaries. Our plan ends at the urban growth boundaries as far as road planning goes and you'll see how they, they're kind of a network outside of that.
I, thank you very much. I'd like to see that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we will revisit. Discussion on design standards for commercial and industrial development, John?
Okay, this has been kind of a, a thin, ongoing discussion. There, there just been some interest in looking at our present regulations for design standards and looking at possibilities for possibly beefing them up or changing them or tweaking them. What I provided to you is the present provisions and one memo. It's actually from a, from a previous meeting. And also a newer memo, the example of town of Lewisville regarding site development and design review regulations. Uh, and this actually has very much relevance for Dollar General. Uh, Lewisville, if you look at their Dollar General, it's bricked all the way around. They had some very strict design guidelines and they went through a process of design review and Dollar General said, okay. I mean, if they want to go somewhere, they'll, they'll go there and they'll, they'll meet your standards. You can look around at a few others, some in Rock, like in Rockford. Uh, there's one along 321 going towards Friendsville, still in the city limits of Mariville that has a different character. One on the, was it Hall Road in Alcoa that has a different character. Uh, so, design review is a, is kind of a flexible thing. You can make it as strict as you want. You can make it as flexible as you want it or as minimal as you want it. I can't really tell you what to do. We, we kind of bit the bullet several years back and put design review in our regulations for site plan review and Roger references those every time something comes up. It's a new, new design, new site plan. Uh, so, this is open for discussion and guidance to me. I'm not sure which way you want me to go on this.
I guess, John, I had requested you bring this or look at it again. And after I went back through it, I guess I was encouraged at how much we had already put in
Yes.
the, the design, into the design standards. For some reason, I was thinking we only had building front definitions, but we actually do have side definitions, anything that's exposed to the, to the roadway. They don't go as far as the design review or, or we don't have design review, but they actually go further than what I had recollected. And I guess, Roger, maybe a question for you, because it, this goes along with Dollar General. We kind of use, Mr. Seymour, the Dollar General that went into Rockford as a, a target to avoid.
You have to put your camera down because it, it's pretty bright.
That is a, I don't think any of us want a, another beacon in the county as such as that one is. I know that Townsend has lighting restrictions and the lighting has to be toned down. And Roger, looking at our lighting standards, could a building go in such as Dollar General put in at the south edge of Brockford, Brockford, just from a lighting standpoint?
I hadn't even paid that much attention to that, especially at night. I'm on the other end of the county when the sun goes down.
Well, drive, drive out, drive out, uh, the road sometime, Old Knoxville Highway, or approach it from coming by the Alcoa Water Plant.
The, a lot of the lighting that standards we require can be achieved using that full cutoff top lighting or just go straight down. And that, that's been very effective on the site plans that we've looked at.
I don't know if anybody else took it, took the time to look through the existing standards, but I would suggest you, you do look at the standards and see if there's anything you want to, to beef up. David?
Last meeting, John, want to ask you know about the wall, about how you do and it's stated in here about that occasional changes in surface planes or changes in materials. One in Lewisville, I went down and took pictures and the, the change in surface is the same material. So, how, how do you dif- make them decide whether it's a different material or if they can do it the same?
I have different regulations in this. I think theirs is, is an offset. You can have an architectural offset.
And this is the, yeah, this is Lewisville. It says, uh, changes in surface planes are changes in materials. So, can it be either or?
Either or, yeah.
I'd, I'd like, I mean, just in my thoughts, something to kick around, I would like to see that if we go down this road, see that surface plane change mandatory and the material mandatory, because I think if you have a contrast there, it's going to make that building look smaller. Because the picture, I, when I went down and looked at the one in Lewisville, yes, there's an offset there, but unless you're paying attention, you don't see it because it's the same material. Even though the gutter and the downspout's a different color. So, I think you, I mean, I know I'm kind of getting detailed early, but I think that offset should be constructed out of a different type of material where it's brick versus stone or stone versus brick. It, it would make that wall look shorter and smaller.
Actually, our Saw Creek Industrial Park has that as far as a change of color. It can be, it can be all brick, but it has to change color to make that break. And I see where you're coming from. It just, just having a, an offset physical plane might not show up very well. Just as a note, our design regulations, except for the lighting, was based on Mariville's. When they went through the process of changing their design criteria, we just kind of took theirs and modified it a little bit.
The new Dollar General going into Townsend is all brick also.
All right, unless there's, we'll move off of the design requirements. I would ask you to continue to review these, look and see if there's anything that comes to mind to enhance those. John, thank you for including the Louisville that I hadn't taken the time to look it up on the web. I presume that's on the web.
I think part of it is. I'm not sure if the whole thing's there. Because they, they have actually a design review committee and I, I'm going to have to research whether the county can actually do that. I think that's actually municipal. You'd have to adopt something or adapt something into your zoning to allow that to occur.
All right, the final item on the long-range planning was discussion of possible additions regarding RV park regulations. John, do you want to address this on that?
Okay, I would ask that we go through this in a little detail because some of these are pretty straightforward. Some of them may not be. And what I'm looking for is a complete list before I come back to you next month with some specific wording of regulation change. So, if we could go down to residual concerns down at the bottom of page one. Requirements for deceleration lane responsibility. Uh, the question was, who will pay for any required access improvements on public right-of-way? That can be very, made very explicit that it would be the developer and the development. I mean, it's, it's kind of, to me, it's implied, but it can be very explicit and no questions asked on that. That's a fairly simple one. There is some non-mandatory wording of lighting and noise regulation application. Uh, there was a comment that there needed to be change to mandatory conformity and that's a change of should to shall. That's pretty straightforward also. Duration of occupancy, uh, seemed to have been quite a bit of a controversy going up into this and 60 days is seen as a little bit too restrictive by at least one person on the county commission. Uh, and, uh, you know, that was a comment, so I put it here. We went through a lot of discussion when we came to the conclusion of, of 60 days, but there's still some residual concern on the county commission that this might be a little too restrictive.
And, and I, I feel like 60 days is not too restrictive. I, I think that's, that's where we need to be. However, I, I did have one question and, and I guess it concerns the 60 days and I, I'm a, this could happen if, if the, the, the RV'er was to go to one campground and spend 60 days there. There's nothing that restricts him from going to campground down the road and setting up for 60 days again.
No, no restriction.
So, I think, I think 60 days is plenty.
Assuming that there's availability of a site down the road, but there, there usually is.
Commissioner McCallum?
So, that's just the, the owner's responsibility to check for the 60 days. There's nobody to verify that, is there?
Correct. On, on most things that are a violation, it is done by complaint, so it would go to Roger. And, uh, you know, you could go down there and ask to, to see the books about how long it's been in, in the site. And, uh, so, I mean, that, it can be enforced. It's, it is the kind of thing that you, you have to have a complaint. You're not going out and checking every vehicle that goes in and tagging it like you do in a, you know, an hour parking lot where they mark the tire. They're not going to be doing that, but it, it can be a complaint.
And in the same line that, about going down the road, and I, I don't know if I'm trying to get too restrictive or not, but what, what would happen if he pulls out of that one campground? He goes to the state park for one day? Would that allow him to come back for 60 more days in the same campground?
I think it's 60 days in a, in a year's period.
In a year's period. That's, that's what I want to make sure that we, we've got the wording in there that says that. It's, is make sure we have that wording.
So, John, I think the consensus is 60 days remains.
Okay.
But you'd make it...
The, the original proposal was what, 200, 250?
Oh, it's like 240, I think. That one ranged over a lot of territory. I mean, that was one of the more controversial parts of this. Shall I move on to the next one? Applicability to existing campgrounds and RV parks. The existing campgrounds follow the grandfather provisions. Uh, it may be helpful to state so explicitly and refer to the section of the regulations that give them a certain leeway to continue and to expand as they are and, and as they sit. So, I think that's just a matter of making explicit reference to another part of the regulations. Any comments on that?
I think you're right, John.
Okay. Provision for camp workers. Uh, some would think that this could be a loophole for permanent residency and ask whether it does, does it need to be further defined and specified in regulations? I made a comment at the county commission meeting that any regulation can be gamed, uh, but I just don't see that this is a avenue for gaming a regulation because, I mean, y- your income comes from the turnover of tourists coming through. I mean, your, your income comes from the turnover of tourists coming through. To have a permanent resident there, you know, you want to provide for your camp workers. One person said, well, what if he just worked one day a year? Is he a camp worker? Then does he be able to reside there? I, I'm not sure how to address this, other than I don't know that this is a, something that will come up in a real manner as a, as a problem in campgrounds. I don't know that it's been that way in existing campgrounds. So I, I'm not sure how to address that, other than I think we came to a conclusion that it would be a good idea to have some residential, I mean, some places for workers to stay on the campground. You have a, you know, a 24/7 type of a workforce there. If that's the case, if they live offsite, you've got to call them in from another place. So that's a matter of accommodation, of convenience for having camp workers actually on the campsite itself.
And I, John, I think that other provisions in the standards, we say you can't remove the wheels, you can't make a permanent residence out of, out of the campsite. I mean, that, we've got other provisions in there that kind of prevent it from becoming a permanent residence. I'm, I'm not sure what the, what the concern is.
Well, I, I think it's just a matter that if, if, if it can be seen as a loophole, will somebody take it? And I can't say that they will or won't. I just don't know that it's going to reach a level of seriousness that, that requires us to identify that any further. You know, I think, I think if you take it to its extreme, it would be a, an RV park and a campground that had 100% workers, you know, working for the campground. I just don't see that occurring. I mean, that, that's just not a, what kind of a business plan is that? That's, that's, that's like a mobile home park. If we needed to find something, we might limit it to no more than, let's say, one worker site per X number of campsites. I mean, that, that could limit it internally that way. If, if you need a standard, that might be the way to go. And that lets, let me just throw out a figure, one, one worker per every 25 sites. That, you know, you're probably not going to get something that's, you know, four or 500. You, you're just going, that will limit it then to the number of camp workers you can have onsite.
John, I'd say let it stand as it is and don't address it.
And we can deal with it if, if it comes up.
Yes.
We can always go back and deal with it with, by changing the regulation, can't we? Or, once it happens, would that be grandfathered? That's the-
Well, that, that's a good question. And I always want you to think ahead and, and think whether it's going to be a problem. If this is a problem in some people's minds, I'm, I tell you what I'll do. I'll, I'll come back with some wording on that and let you say pass it on or not. In fact, each one of these is going to come back as a separate proposal for amendment. It's not going to be an omnibus proposal for amendment, because each one of these needs to stand on its own. And when it goes to the county commission, it'll be voted up or down on its own.
That's fine. That's fine.
And in this proposal, can you bring back how many campsites you can get on 10 acres?
I'll check on that.
Okay.
I think we made that calculation, didn't we?
So, so we'll know if we want to limit it 1 to 25 or 1 to 50?
Okay.
Okay.
Which kind of segues into the next one. Maximum size of campground. One of the commissioners noted there's no maximum size of campground in the regulations. 10 acres is the minimum. There's no upper limit on that. And the question would, was, should there be a cap, should a cap be placed on any one development?
Commissioner McColl?
Person had eight acres, perfect for a campsite. What, they just have to come and ask for variance?
I'm sorry?
If somebody had like an eight acre, perfect for a campground area, could they come and ask for variance?
No, there's no hardship there. They just don't meet the regulations.
Can they go board a zone, a peasant and ask for something?
You have to have a hardship that's inherent in the land itself. And just because you got eight acres is not a hardship. That means you just, you're limited to what you can do.
Commissioner French?
I, I think we should put a cap on it, but until you come back with the, the number of campsites that can be put on 10 acres, I'm not sure I'm ready to determine whether I want to cap it at 20 or five, or 15 or whatever, until I see what your figures are for 10 acres.
Okay. Any other comments on that? There was a question about the applicability to the suburbanizing zone. And the question was, should campgrounds be an option in the suburbanizing zone? And is this consistent with the more urban character of Alcoa and Mirable urban growth boundary areas? We've had some discussion about the urban growth boundary areas. Campgrounds, the way we've got it defined right now is limited to road segments that are definitely in the rural area. They don't even apply to suburbanizing zone, as far as the definition of the roads. There are provisions in the suburbanizing zone, however, that if we wanted to identify some road segments in the suburbanizing zone, they could apply. So we've got kind of a holding place in the suburbanizing zone. There, there were at least one that, that stated that he, and he represents the urban area. He stated that he did not want that possibility even there. So it would be a matter of taking out that possibility in the future out of the suburbanizing zone. So that, here, this one would be a matter of subtraction from a zone, even though it's not allowed now because of the definition of roads. It could be allowed in the future. Taking it out would not even allow it in the future. And by the way, we do allow campgrounds in the commercial area. I mean, that's, that's commercial use. We're just talking about outside the C1 commercial use in the urbanizing zone, suburbanizing zone, or the urban growth boundary.
I guess I'm not quite understanding what the objection is to it going-
That it's, that campgrounds are really not consistent with quote urban, that it is more of a rural enjoyment opportunity and a tourist enjoyment opportunity. And if you go into an urban area, I presume the, the idea is if you want to stay somewhere, a hotel or motel or something like that, is be more appropriate temporary tourist venue. I'm, might be guessing on that. I really don't. I'm not too sure.
It doesn't, doesn't seem to me like from a business model standpoint, I'd want to put a campground in, in the suburbanizing area. So I mean, it's, but I-
Well, I've seen campgrounds right outside of urban types of areas. Lebanon, Tennessee is one. If you turn off and go down towards Murfreesboro, there's a campground right at the edge of town.
How long, how, how long has it been there?
I, I remember when it wasn't there, that I've been, you know, I've been going to Murfreesboro since I was a kid. So I can't remember when it came in. Of course, there's been a whole lot of development of trucking and everything down there. I think it came in as all that trucking operation came in, the campground came in.
I can understand when urban grows to the campground. Any strong feelings? You want me to take it, disallow it? I mean, it's, but it's already in the commercial. So it's allowed in commercial. We got opposition to putting it in rural, and now we got opposition to putting it in-
Let me just bring back what it would look like. And if you don't think, you know, it's up to y'all to recommend to the county commission. And I'll, I'll document everything we considered and pass that on to the county commission. But your, your recommendation is the one that's actually going to be the ones that they can act on. If they want to send anything back, then they can send it back for the consideration, and hopefully with a little more guidance than sometimes we get on that. The next one is ability, applicability of occupancy to cabins. We may, may need some clarification of the applicability of occupancy time restrictions to cabin, which is the 60-day limit. And that's a matter of just making it more explicit. I mean, I think the intent there is 60 days, but we can make it explicit to the camp cabins. The next one is 18 feet of pavement criteria. Is that too small? We, we had a long discussion on that. Our subdivision regulations have 18-foot and two-foot shoulder. Our special exception requirements in zoning has 18-foot and two-foot shoulders. The Board of Zoning Peels can turn down any proposal that does not meet that criteria. Some people think that a, like, well, let me put it this way. RVs are fairly big and can be fairly wide, particularly with extensions of mirrors and so forth. And there's some concerns that they cannot be accommodated. I just want to point out that they have been historically accommodated on two-lane roads that are at the limit of 18 feet, some of them with, with no shoulders. And I don't know of any instance of, well, of any frequency of them falling off into the river or, or hitting the mountains. I think they, if anything, they'll probably hit the mountain side if it's a close cut and knock off one of the mirrors. I just don't have an experience that that is a big problem right now with 18-foot wide roads.
You're not talking about high-speed travel in the, within the campground. 18-foot is more than adequate for a vehicle to travel on, at slow speeds. I mean, at 5 or 10 mile an hour. It's not like we're traveling down Ella Joy Road, and there's campers that go down Ella Joy Road, and it's got an 18-foot standard.
Actually, I was thinking about a little Tucalichi.
I think one of the concerns with this was not just RVs passing, but emergency services vehicles in case of a fire, fire engines. You know, if it's a major fire that, you know, the engines are going to have to pass one another because you've got so much, so much water on one engine, and then they're going to be shuddling one in and one out, one in and one out. I think that was one of the major concerns that this was brought up. It's, it's, I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
But again, 18, 18 feet is more than, more than wide enough access. Then you're getting down to, what is the turning radius? We're, I think we're starting to-
Well, I, I want you to-
Trying to build standards that are more significant than what we have for any other development.
We went through this, we went through this discussion on, and, and some of the members, quite, quite, quite a few of the members were not on at that time, when we talked about subdivision regulations. And we, we looked at the engineering standards and, you know, the, the ASHTO standards, it's an association for highway officials and so forth, transportation officials. And we found that 18-foot was the, the width that we could stand on. Now, on a higher volume road, you probably need 20 feet just for the traffic, not for the vehicle itself, just to accommodate the traffic a little better. But as far as just accommodating a vehicle, 18 feet was something that, that showed up for emergency services and, and everything else. Two nine-foot travel lanes.
Are you talking about internal roads?
No, I'm talking about the external roads.
Okay.
I, I, you know-
John, I don't see that we have-
We've, we've really had this discussion over and over again, and I'm not sure. I think just, okay. I think people are just concerned that that is a little narrow, but they travel on those roads every day. And I, I've not known of a great history of problems on 18-foot, particularly if you have some shoulders. Impact on environment and residential homes. There's concern about the impact of campgrounds on surrounding environment and surrounding residential homes. We tried to address that with greater setbacks and with buffering. I'm not sure how much more we can go on that. So I, that was a concern that was raised, and I just put it down here. If, if you think we need some, some more, then give me some guidance on that. I'm not even sure how to come back with a, with a proposal on that one.
I would say leave it as it is for the time being.
And related to that a little bit is closeness to existing residential home. Concerned that the setback in buffering requirements may not protect existing residential home from adverse impact. I sure can't guarantee that there will be no impact of a use like this next to a residential structure. But having setback and having buffering is what we do on any commercial use that's next to a residential structure. We're just applying it consistently to this type of commercial use.
I think we tried to address that in the, in the original draft as best we could within reasonable limits.
Okay. Any other comments on that guidance? No? Enforcement and penalties for non-compliance. There's concern that enforcement and penalties addressed generally in the zoning regulations and state statutes may not be adequate. Well, I, I don't know that we can go much further than basically state statutes. It's a class C misdemeanor for a violation. You have to prove something, you have to take people to court eventually. There, there are some ways that Roger can cite people and say, you know, come into compliance within 30 days, 60 days, whatever. And that's the standard operating procedure for any compliance. I'm not sure how we can beef that up anymore and make it effective. I think it, I don't know that it's broken, put it that way.
Commissioner French?
Are there any, any kind of standards for fines or anything like that if they exceed the 60-day limit? I mean, can you, can you fine them so many, so much a day? They go over that? Or, I, I, you know, let's, that's, I guess one of the things that was, was behind the, the, the suggestion here. Is there-
What's the class?
And, and how could we enforce that? I mean-
We don't, we do, unfortunately, we don't have a zoning police force.
I understand that, but are you going to just smack them on the hand and say, eh, go on? Or what are you going to do? If, if you've got a regulation, how are you going to enforce it?
They would get a notice that they're in violation, and they would get a letter that they, they've got X amount, usually 30 days to get it back into regulation or go to court. And then at that point, you know, I take the, the, the case to the law, the county attorney, and he handles it from there, brings about a lawsuit. If, if an injunction's issued and they do it again, or don't comply, then I think the penalty could even be going to jail.
As far as fines go, there are provisions in state statutes for class C misdemeanors, and I can't recall what the fine is. It used to be $50. I think it's actually come up to more than that, and that can be a continuing fine as a violation every day. But that's something for the courts to do and not something for Roger to do. He, he can instigate the procedure, but he can't actually go out and say, well, you owe me 50 bucks because you're in violation.
Go ahead.
I guess my question is this. If we're going to limit them to 60 days, and you're going to give them 30 days to comply, there are already 30 days over the limit. There ought to be some way, and to, if they're, you're, you're going to give them 30 days, that's a $50 a day fine, that's $1,500. I mean, there ought to be something that says we, we should be able to collect that. I mean, what's the use in having a 60-day limit if you're going to give them 30 more days to comply to that? I, I, I don't-
Well, it depends on how you want us to polish our jackboots as to how strong you want us to come down on people. The, the reasonable way of approaching this is to, to cite the violation. A lot of people just aren't aware of the violation. So you cite the violation, you say, within a reasonable time, you've got to correct it. If you don't correct it in a reasonable time, I'm going to have to take you to court. And here are the penalties. It's a, it's a class C misdemeanor, and you will have, you might be subject to some fines, but you're going to comply one way or the other. So, you know-
And I, and I agree with you, John. I, I mean, I don't think you need to come down on them hard, but how long does it take to get an RV ready to drive out of the campground? Doesn't take 30 days. You know, it's just a matter of packing up and leaving. That's, I mean, that, I guess that's, I've got a, a problem of giving them that extra time.
Commissioner French?
If once, once they're-
I don't think we, as a planning commission, we, we do not have the judicial authority to implement what you're asking. We write regulations. We are not, we don't write laws for the county.
I understand what you're saying. But it, it kind of, yeah.
I understand your frustration, but-
I, I would suggest that this is really something that, you know, it gets into legal matters and gets into due process. You can't just come down hard. And, and, you know, that's just not the way to do a regulation like this. I'd suggest that you probably send this to the attorney for the county mayor and let him give his opinion on how far you can go in setting fines yourself unilaterally. I'm not sure you can do it. I think, I think under zoning, it's going to take a process that's a little bit different. You might have a standalone ordinance that says that, you know, it- You might have a standalone ordinance that says that, you know, it starts the day of the violation occurs, but I would like for you to seek that advice from the county attorney.
Do you want me to go to the mayor and do that, or do you want to do that as a, as like, from the commission?
I will write that up as my recommendation on this item.
And send it to the, to the mayor?
No, send it to the planning commission, if the planning commission wants to send that on to the county commission for consideration.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I would think, aren't we just trying to give the owner the teeth and the backbone? And then who's the owner who operates that campground? They have the ability to go do what they need to do with what we've given.
Well, they can, they can do that internally themselves. They need to get backs them up.
Right.
But they can say, you know, my hands are tied. You've been here more than sixty days, you got to leave.
Well, that'd be my opinion. They'd need to police it and handle that more internally than us.
I'm going to start taking karate.
The last, last, the last one, I can tell everybody's getting kind of giddy. It's getting, we're getting on an hour and a half here. Legal liability. There's concern that allowing and approving new campgrounds on county roads could lead to increased liability to the county. My response to that was, they're already on the roads. You know, just so long as you have due diligence in the site planning process and taking care of traffic and things like that, I don't see that there's any increased liability for the county. This is a use that can be permitted legally under zoning, and I just don't see the liability there. But that's another legal question, if anybody wants to pursue it, really needs to go to the county attorney. Now, is this complete? Is there anything else to take up? Because I'm going to come back with some specific proposals to you next time that you can use, you can change them, but it might be to the point that you can send some of them on to the county commission. I would suggest you do it incrementally, each one individually, so if one gets voted up, the other one gets voted down, it doesn't kill both of them. You know, you can have them done incrementally.
I would, I would agree with that, John.
That's-
Because I'm sure that there's some that's going to come back, and we're probably not going to want to act on it.
Well, we've only been working on it for, what, five years?
Six.
A few more months is not going to, not going to hurt.
All right. You have anything else for the good of the order?
Just under staff reports, I sent out a notice to you about an aging summit on December ninth. It's from seven-thirty to eleven-thirty at New Providence Church. It is put on by the, I think you've already registered for that. I would encourage you, even, I'm going to be able to count your hours there as training, and I'll certify it, but even if you've got all your hours, this is a very worthy thing to attend to. The last time we had an aging summit, what came out of that was the Senior Miles Program, the Smiles Program, where we're providing transportation to seniors that can't afford or cannot, don't have the ability to drive. And that's been, it's been a roaring success. We've actually got some, not international, but quite a bit of recognition in other states and other communities around here. So, this is a type of an activity that's not just a vacant and vacuous planning activity. This is put on by the Community Action Agency and the Office on Aging, and they want to have specific recommendations of what they can do to make the situation of the elder population in Blount County better. So, I would encourage you that even if you don't need to get any more hours to participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I sent you out an email on that. Yeah. And by the way, if you get on that, it automatically puts the planning site email on there, and for Mr. French, we had to change that internally. Put your own email in there, don't use mine, because all that does is block everybody else that tries to get into that. So, change that, planning@blounttn.org to your email for your registration.
Thank you. Reminder, next month's meeting is Monday, December 22nd. It's the week of Christmas, Monday, the 22nd. Thank you. Oh, Commissioner French?
Just one comment, if y'all bring my Christmas presents that night, I'd appreciate it.
I'll bring you leftover turkey.
Overd leftover turkey?
We are adjourned.